To order the caberoha. No, we stand. See, I know. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we will have.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Davis? Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mrs. Raell?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have a special presentation on Project Search. And, Steph? Oh, we've got a couple.
Right up here, too.
All right. So my name is Stephanie Triba, and I run the Project Search program out of the Aspire River View Hospital. And I brought a friend with me tonight. Do you want to introduce yourself?
My name is Samantha Leach. I work at Cravings Coffee Shop. And I've been there for two years, and I'm one of the, I'm a second year of the Project Searchers from what they started.
So we're going into our fifth year now. In our first year, actually, David Akey had joined me, and we had given an update on the program at that point. And now going into our fifth year, a lot has changed. And we just wanted to kind of give an update today on how things are going over there. And so that's why I had asked Sam to come in with us today. So for those of you that maybe don't know, Project Search is a transition program for young adults with disabilities. And about, and five years ago, ODC had, or six years ago now, ODC had approached the school district asking to be partners. And we've had a classroom at the hospital ever since. Our site serves students with intellectual disabilities, emotional disabilities, learning disabilities, speech and language, physical disabilities, and more recently, a lot of students with autism and mental health. So throughout the state of Wisconsin, we're considered one of the high-risk sites as we take some of the toughest kids. A lot of the Project Search sites around the state have a cutoff. And if students don't meet their criteria, they don't get accepted. Where I feel like here, we really pick kids based on filling our spots and making sure that we can help as many kids as we can every year. So this year, we're actually, we have 11. The lowest we've ever had is nine, but we had started the year with 10. So most, there are some sites that only have four interns a year throughout the state of Wisconsin. So I feel like we do a pretty good job of making sure we're meeting the needs of our community. Our site has been a teaching site for the other sites in Wisconsin. So we get asked to present quite a bit at our statewide meetings and trainings throughout Wisconsin. When all, that's when all of the instructors and partners come together. So we're pretty excited about that. We're actually doing a training tomorrow. Our recent class has learned about Zoom. And we've been Zooming with, doing Zoom meetings with a lot of the other Project Search interns throughout the state. So that's been pretty exciting this year. Project Search is a three-rotation internship program. Students learn social and work skills. Right now, our site in particular has 23 departments onboard. So we actually had four new departments join on this year. We have an intern in the OR, which was pretty exciting. It's taken us a while to get in there, so that was pretty cool. Our site really pushes the students to their limits and ensures that they're ready for adulthood by the end of the year. So my favorite part about it is that in one, not even a year, in nine months, we see a ton of growth in our interns and what we expect them to do. So just a couple statistics statewide, because you don't hear that very often. Project Search has 611 nationwide sites, including 46 states and 10 countries. We have been, we have served since the beginning, over 20, almost 25,000 students. And Project Search has only been around for a short amount of time. Our site specifically in the past five years has met the criteria achieving employment at 50% or higher. Right now, what we're really working on is getting those jobs, but then being able to maintain those jobs. That's kind of the missing piece right now. Let's see. Our criteria means that they're working 16 hours or more in a collaborative environment in the community, just as any other employee would. So specifically, in the past five years, we've achieved 70% or higher, meeting that criteria goal. So the 50% was those that met the 16-hour goal. We're 70% or higher with students just working. Some come into the program realizing that they might only be able to work eight hours. And that's kind of their cutoff. But to us, that's an outcome, and that's positive because they're at least doing something in the community after the end of our program. And then our site is a model for many of the new sites, which I talked about before. Aspire River View continues to be very supportive. Actually, our liaison was in Madison last week, was invited to the governor's mansion. They awarded all the Project Search sites throughout the state with a certificate. So she was able to go to the governor's mansion and meet with him and accept that on our behalf. So that was pretty cool. We serve more students locally than any other site. And I mentioned that before. Most sites are five to eight students on average, and we've had 10 or above every single year. We work with the other school districts, which is pretty unique. So we've always, we typically have students from Nacusa and Port Edward. This year, we have one from Nacusa. And last year, we had a Port Edward student who actually is working in our school district. So that was pretty exciting as well. On the sheet that I had given you, there's just all those good graph numbers. But Project Search outcomes as a whole, you can kind of go through that on your own and see. But I think it's always interesting to see where we sit nationwide. So then the next little part, what we are doing, so what we do at the interns has grown over the years. We try to hold one social event that our graduates and our current interns come back to. Many friendships have been established through that, and it kind of gives our interns a time to come back, show what they're doing, and a time for us to kind of help them network and build those social groups. Hold a volunteer opportunity each month. So the students that are there now will do one volunteer opportunity as a class every month until they graduate or done, at the completion of the program. They have interview once a month with an outside businessperson or someone for our community. So if you're ever interested in that role, it's kind of fun, and you'd be more than happy. I know Danny's going to be coming this month and doing that with them. They're learning computer skills. We just started working, networking, this whole Zoom meeting, learning about, with the other interns from other sites. They're doing an email pen pal system. What's really cool is the ODC here in town now services the Marshfield site, the Wisconsin Rapids site, the Wausau site, and now the Monaca site, but the, and the Stevens Point site. And so we have done Zoom with all of them, and we actually are inviting them to Wisconsin Rapids in November to do an event. And we're going to go bowling and make ornaments for the trees at the Capitol. And then we're all going to meet up in Madison at Christmas and kind of get together. And so we've started it where we will all go visit each other's community, just to kind of give them an idea that there's things out there that they can go take their family and friends to. So that's been a big push and something new. So they're really getting to know a lot of people nearby and around the community. Participate in the Project Search Pals program. So at the hospital, they are matched up with somebody that works there, and they have once with that person once a month. And it's really just about a friendship and getting to know people. And it's really nice for those that might not have interns in their department, so that they can be a part of it. And then lastly, we participate in our Business Advisory Council program. So we invite 12 people from our community to join us and sit on our business team. And they work with our students four times a year and through a mentor email pals. So it's considered a meeting, but we really do fun things. They interview with them, they get to do presentations, learn about their interns. But it also just helps us to network. And when jobs do come available, they always, it's been nice because they kind of think of us first and see if we have a good fit. So why we're here tonight? We just wanted to share the statistics. Five years later, I really, I think we've done great things with Project Search. And I think we've helped many young adults who would not have been working otherwise. And many of them are employed or have quit and went on to different employments. And so I think that speaks, speaks highly of what we're doing. To gain your continued support, just trying to, we're kind of doing that big revive and trying to get out there and teach people about what we're doing. Because it's important, and we need to place our students, and we really want to see them to be successful. And then to show that what we're doing right now and what you guys have supported for the last five years is working. And I've got living proof of me here today. So on the third sheet, it does list a bunch of the places that our interns are working. So just to kind of give you an idea of where we are. But then I'm going to kind of give the mic here to my friend Samantha. So Sam lives in our second Project Search class in 2016, 2017. She's now been working at Cravings Coffee Shop for three years.
Almost three years.
Almost three years. We were trying to figure out the other day what it was. So she attended Lincoln High School, and then she participated in Project Search her final year of high school. And then I think I could say this, that being able to work, I actually had Sam when she was a sophomore and first had come to Lincoln. And she has grown up a ton. But I think going to work gives her a purpose, and it gives her a way to earn her own money in the things that she does. So do you want to tell everybody first about what you did at the hospital when you were there?
Of course. What I did at the hospital was my last rotation. Now, these rotations, you'll be getting the, whoever gets the Project Search will be having these rotations as they're going away from this Project Search. My last rotation was a kitchen and keeping it right.
You were in med search.
Med search. And I think cleaning, really, is what I think it was?
I think you were on the cleaning crew, yep.
Cleaning crew, which is cleaning the hospital a lot. And I don't know what, well, I would the last two things in order, but it probably doesn't matter. Anything, they'll probably get these things as they're going, when they, before they graduate from Project Search.
So did you enjoy your time at Project Search?
I, yeah, I probably did.
You did? And what did you learn while you were there?
Probably the experience to do, how to get a job out there and probably doing the right thing instead of doing it the wrong way. And listening to the boss and listening to everything. And listening to probably to customers what is going on. Because that's what I'm listening to with the customers. Because they're telling me things, says, what do they not like, or what do they probably don't like?
And what do you have to do?
Probably tell Teresa, which is my boss at work. And then she'll probably help me fix it. Or she probably says to me, like, early today, but you had to do, you have to do what I say.
Yep. And you've learned, you've learned how to act and how not to act, right? Did you gain some friendships while you were there? At Project Search?
Yes, I did. I learned friendship and everything else.
Yep. And now you work at Cravings, right? What are some things that you do there?
What I do there is the kitchen and everything, which is all the muffins, all the cookies, and all the egg bakes. Right now, we just got, we gave away our spinach, because it's not selling pretty much. We're selling a lot now from our sausage, which is a sausage potato with peppers, green peppers, red peppers, a little bit of onions, pepper jack cheese, all the other stuff that'll make it really good.
And do you have to clean the kitchen when you're done?
Exactly right. I have to clean everything, which is probably dusty, even clean the toilet.
Yeah? So what you're saying, are the skills that you learned at Project Search, are you using in your job now?
Yes.
So if you had to go back, would you do Project Search again?
I would probably do that.
You would?
I'll probably be made to help out.
Yeah. Excellent. So thank you for letting us come in. And like I said, this was just to kind of go back and let you guys know that what we're doing really is working. And we've had a lot of successes over the years. And when I thought about coming tonight, I originally was going to come alone, and it's never fun when it's just me. So I called Sam and she was, was very willing. So thank you, guys, for listening. Does anyone have any questions for us tonight?
I just want to thank you. It was a great presentation. And Sam, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you very much. I learned from the best.
We appreciate you, one of the best, absolutely.
Well, and we appreciate, many of, I see many of your faces at our graduations. And if you're able to, we always send out an invite, please do come, because it is quite amazing to see some of these young individuals get up there and the things that they're asked to do and how they can be successful at it, so.
And that's very, it's showcased and highlighted at that graduation ceremony, the work that transpires with the kids and for the kids. And it also highlights your abilities, Steph, and how you've operated this program for the last five or six years, because it is absolutely outstanding. Lastly, Sam, nice work. Very well done. I would say that piece you said about listening to the boss, big fan.
You're a big fan of the Cravings or being the boss? That's the boss right there. You gotta listen to the boss.
We also have our hot apple cider that are happening right now.
The walking billboard. Excellent. Well, thank you, guys.
Fantastic.
Okay, next we have our student reps report. Jacqueline?
Okay, so for the homecoming football game, we won against fashion, got the water jug. And then the girls' golf team went to sectionals. The seniors won the spirit stick. And then we had homecoming on October 5th. The power buff volleyball game, the juniors won that. But then we have the powder puff game on the 16th of October, which is this one state, so.
Cancelled due to the weather.
Yes, cancelled due to the weather, but yeah.
And the juniors won the volleyball game, from what I understand, because of some questionable officiating. Is that correct?
I'm not really sure about that, but yeah.
Okay, well, thanks a lot, Jacqueline. Appreciate that. Next, we have the minutes.
I move that the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of September 9th, 2019, and a special Board of Education meeting, closed session of October 7th, 2019, be approved as printed.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second to approve the regular Board of Education meeting on September 9th, and the special Board of Education meeting closed on October 7th. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Maureen, any comments from citizens?
None.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go on to committee reports, and I guess I will do the Ed Services committee report. The Educational Services Committee held its monthly meeting on Monday, October 7th. There were four consent agenda items. Does anyone want any of these held out? All right, then I will make a motion to approve the following. ES 1, to approve Board Policy 449, Rights and Responsibilities of Divorced, Separated Parents, Guardians and Parents/Guardians Not Sharing the Same Household, for first reading. This new policy explains the need to maintain a collaborative relationship with all involved and to show that the district will maintain strict neutrality in such situations. The policy will serve as a good tool to share with parents in situations where staff are asked to get involved. Next, it was ES 2, to approve Board Policy 443.3, Smoking and/or Use of Tobacco or Nicotine Products or Electronic Smoking Devices by Students, for first reading. Vaping is becoming more and more popular. Administration felt recommendations should be made to include vaping language in this policy, and also the following two board policies. These policies address students, employees, and school premises. And ES 3 is to approve Board Policy 522.2, Smoking and/or Use of Tobacco, Nicotine Products or Electronic Smoking Devices by Employees, for first reading. And ES 4 is to approve Board Policy 831, Smoking and/or Use of Tobacco, Nicotine Products or Electronic Smoking Devices on School Premises, for first reading. So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve ES 1 through ES 4. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And then we had two updates. The first one, New Course Curriculum Modification Proposal from Kathy Stevins-Hence. Recommendations were reviewed for new courses or modifications to curricula. These recommendations will be reviewed and voted on by the District CII Committee, and the recommendations brought back to the Ed Services Committee for approval in November. And there was discussion on the Schedule Change Proposal for Rams. Central Office Administrators also had an extended discussion regarding this. It was felt that this proposal, that this proposal should be tabled for next school year, allowing more time for discussion and consideration of alternatives. And our second update was Wisconsin Student Assessment System, WSAS, results for 2018-19. A handout on the 2018-19 WSAS results was shared with the committee. Kathy reviewed the results of the Forward Act, Act Aspire and Act Statewide Exam. Test scores by district, building, and grade level were shared, as well as achievement gap data and comparisons with other districts. And with that, I move to approve the Ed Services Committee meeting of October 7th, 2019. Okay, a motion and a second to approve that. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. All right. So next, we are on to Business Services. And Troy, you're going to take that tonight?
Business Services Committee held their monthly committee meeting on Monday, October 7th, and the committee members agreed upon the following consent agenda item. Business Services 1, relating to Point of Beginnings and Topographic Schematic Design, for approval at Lincoln High School. Does anyone want the motion held? With that, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item, Business Services -1, that the proposal for Point of Beginnings, to begin work on topographic surveying and schematic site design for possible future work at Lincoln High School, at a cost not to exceed $43,400, to be funded with a $25,000 donation from the Legacy Foundation, and $18,400 from the building and grounds budget, be recommended for approval.
Second.
All right. And the committee also looked at the following invoices that were for review.
We have a motion on the floor. Yep. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve Business Services Committee meeting of October 7th. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
That needs to be roll call, I'm sorry.
Oh, because of money, yep. Roll call. Sorry?
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Raell?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes. Okay. Now we can continue, Troy.
The committee looked at the following invoices. The first one being Aero Precision Asphalt, which related to asphalt services for the Mead School Playground and patching the main lot, were included. Total due on that project, $10,045. The next invoice that was looked at was the Athletic Field Services, detailing resurfacing the track at Rams. Total cost on that project, $68,500. And next, we looked at the 4K Community Sites at Building Blocks and Lots of Tots. Both of those sites totaling $104,412.50. And the next, the next set of site agreements was at Beer Inn, 4K Head Start, $44,500. And lastly, we looked at Odyssey Ware, the invoice for our online curriculum, and the library renewal on that, $17,250. So those were the updates that the committee looked at last Monday. And no future agenda items were identified on the minutes as of now. And with that, I move to approve the balance of the Business Services Committee report and minutes of the October 7th, Business Services Committee.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the Business Services Reports of October 7th. And what was the other one? Did you say there were two? No, just.
It was just the update. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Sandy, Personnel Services.
Okay, Personnel Services met last Monday, October 7th. And that, there was no public comment. And from that meeting, we have 12 consent agenda items, and I would like to have number 12 held out. But first 11, number first, the committee recommends and I move to approve the seven support staff appointments. Two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff early retirement. Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff resignation. And we have six, seven policies for second reading. Fourth, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 152, Goal Settings, for second reading. This creates a strategic plan, which will articulate the goals and action steps and a timeline to complete those goals. Five, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 185.3, Educational Services Committee, for second reading. That's just deliberate, everything that our committee does. Six, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 253.4, Development and Approval of Rules and Regulations, for second reading. This is saying that instead of just teachers, staff, that we can use print and electronic information to communicate with our, with our stakeholders. Seventh, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 253.4, Rule, Approval of Agenda Planners, for second reading. At the main meeting, the secondary agenda planners will be approved and language will be agreed upon. And the language agreed upon by elementary administrative groups will also be approved at that time. And then this will go on to the curriculum director by April 20th, so it has those new dates. Eight, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board's Policy 411, Student Non-Discrimination and Anti-Harassment, for second reading. It's just simply deleting individual names and just using titles. So we're just identifying Director of Human Resources and Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Eight and nine are very similar. Nine, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 830, Use of School Facilities, for second reading. And this is, when we have promotional materials being disseminated at some event, we want to make sure that contains a disclaimer that this event is not endorsed or promoted by WRPS. Ten, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 830.1, Facility Use Policy for the Performing Arts Center PAC, for second reading. That has the same paragraph as I just said in number nine. We had 11, the committee recommends and I move to increase the ASAP Coordinated Position by five days, effective October 15th, 2019. And does anybody want any of those held out? Then I.
Does it need a second?
Yeah, it is.
Second.
Okay, the motion and a second to approve PS 1 through PS 11 is printed. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, and Sandy?
And on number 12, we're simply going to be changing the date. The original motion said October 15th, but we're going to change it to October 18th. So it just coincides with the new payroll period, and makes it a lot easier for Dan and his people. So the committee recommends and I move to modify the job description and job classification for the Lincoln High School Library A position, effective October 18th. This position will also move from a four to a five. And what's happened is they're going to be adding the Chromebook care in this position also. And this person's going to be starting at 7:00 instead of 7:25, because we're going to have so much more activity with the Chromebooks.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve PS 12, to modify the job description and job classification for LHS Library A position, effective October 18th. And this is with the change to the sheet. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
And then that, I move that the minutes from the October 7th, 2019, Personnel Services Committee be approved, just approved.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the Personnel Services Committee meeting of October 7th. With one's that, with the correction, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Heidi. Okay, next, agenda referrals. Anyone have anything or information requests? All right, then we will move on to the legislative agenda. Troy?
So this month for the legislative agenda, I'm going to start with the state superintendent's State of Education address back on September 20th, and then we'll talk about what the state senate did last week when they were in session. So on the 20th of September, state superintendent Carolyn Stamford-Taylor delivered her first annual State of Education address at the Capitol. Some of the points that she talked about, she trumpeted the school's successes, but she also expressed concern for persistent gaps in working toward equity in educational achievement, access, and opportunity. In her speech, she called the funding increases included in the most recent budget "a down payment for improving student achievement", and committed to working with the governor and the legislature going forward to improve overall educational outcomes. Turning over to the state senate, all of the K through 12 bills that were taken up in the state senate last week were approved on bipartisan voice votes unanimously with no objections. The following bills were approved by the state assembly, and we'll now head to the governor for his signature. The first of four is Assembly Bill 51, relating to the Minority Teacher Loan Program. As of now, WASP has not taken a position on this legislation. Moving to Assembly Bill 53, relating to pupil records. WASP testified in favor of Assembly Bill 53 when it was before the Assembly Education Committee prior. Assembly Bill 54, which relates to fire, tornado, and school safety drills for all public and private schools. WASP testified in favor of this bill when it was before the Assembly Education Committee as well. And the last, heading to the governor for his signature in the assembly bills, is Assembly Bill 195, which is relating to a license to teach based on reciprocity and granting rulemaking authority. And WASP supports Assembly Bill 195. That is on the assembly side of things. Now, looking over at the upper chamber, the following bills were approved by the senate, and we'll now head to the assembly for their consideration. senate and will now head to the assembly for their consideration. Um, the first is Senate Bill 160, which is relating to the method for providing notice of a special meeting of a school board. Um, WASB helped initiate um Senate Bill 160 as well as its assembly companion, um, Assembly Bill 170 upon the request of a former school board president and supports its passage of the bill. Um, Senate Bill 230 is relating to teacher preparatory programs and granting, granting rulemaking authority. And WASB is supportive of Senate Bill 230. And both the senate and the assembly met last week for the first time since passing the budget bill back in June. Um, each chamber plans to meet just once more in November for a single day only before returning in January for the final floor periods of the 2019-2020 legislative session. So, that was last week. Um, now, numerous um K through 12 bills are scheduled for committee action on Thursday, October 17th. So, that's this Thursday. Um, the senate education committee has scheduled an executive session on a number of K through 12 bills. Um, a certain number of these reflect recommendations made by the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding. Um, Luther Olson of Ribbon chairs the committee meeting this Thursday. And among the bills um scheduled to be taken up and voted out of committee are the following. Um, the first one is Assembly Bill 110, which um is relating to developing a guidebook related to dyslexia and related conditions. Um, proposed senate amendment 1, which will be voted on in committee, would make changes to Assembly Bill 110, recommended by WASB and others. The amendment would change the composition of the committee charged with overseeing the development of the guidebook to include a more diverse representation of interested parties, including um school board members, parents, teachers and administrators. Rather than having a total of eight members, the Wisconsin State Reading Association would each nominate five members and the following public members would be added. Um, one member who represents the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, one member who represents the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, one member representing the council of administrators, one member who represents the largest statewide organization representing parents of pupils, and the last two, a member who represents the largest statewide labor organization and one man, member who has extensive experience in diagnosing dyslexia. So, overall, it would just change the composition of the committee. And that, again, with senate bill, senate amendment 1, changes to Assembly Bill 110. Um, lastly, just a couple more taken up in committee on Thursday, Senate Bill 138, which relates to professional development training and charter education for teachers, service professionals and principals. And lastly, Assembly Bill 194, which relates to requirements for initial licensing as a special education teacher. Um, among the other bills scheduled to be voted out of committee are the following, which were brought forth by recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Commission. Um, Senate Bill 415, which is relating to the timing of equalization aid payments to school districts. Um, Senate Bill 413, which is relating to a shared services aid program per school districts. Senate Bill 412, which is relating to a whole grade sharing categorical aid for school boards. Senate Bill 409, which is relating to grants for feasibility studies of school district consolidation or whole grade sharing. And finally, Senate Bill 408, which is relating to counting pupils enrolled in 4K. And WASB is, came out in support of all these bills, including Assembly Bill 110 as amended by the change up in composition for that committee. Um, lastly, another hearing gaining traction is support for public hearing on legislation to raise the legal age for purchase, sale and possession of cigarettes and nicotine and tobacco products to 21 and the possession of vaping products. Um, that appears to be growing and in the, the legislation itself is known as Tobacco 21 or T 21 bill for short. Um, state rep John Plummer of Lodi chairs the Assembly Committee on Substance Abuse and Prevention and has indicated he would like to hold a hearing on the assembly version of this bill October 23rd. A senate companion version of the bill has been introduced, Senate Bill 364, but is yet to await a hearing in the senate committee on health and human services, which is chaired by our Senator Patrick Testan. So, those are some of the bills recently on the docket and committees going forward. And lastly, um, last thing, just to mention, November 2nd is the Legislative Advocacy Conference um in Stevens Point. I know a few of us are going, so I think that'll be a good opportunity to see what our legislators have to say.
Great, thanks a lot Troy.
It appears that there were some positive partnerships as opposed to other times.
It seems like a lot of good did come out of this past week and coming out of committee, so that's a good step forward.
Wasn't it brought up, um, not too long ago here that they were looking at, when we pay parents to transport students, that, um, you know, if parents are transporting four siblings, that right now they're getting paid for each one of those four siblings and that they're gonna look at just having it one. Has anything become of that?
If they were at, at the same school.
Yeah, the same school, right, you know?
That did pass. I forget the number.
It passed?
Mentioned that.
I think it did, yeah, I think I just.
They took that up and.
So, it is a law?
Well, but I don't know if the governor signed it yet.
I can't tell you that, right. I don't think we've received communication saying this change has happened.
But I think it.
They say no, so.
I think it did pass.
Yeah, I don't think there's any holdup aside from the standard process.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it's common sense.
Okay.
But that never barred lawmakers in the past, what are you, but.
If you just look at some of our bills, there's.
Yeah.
Huge, huge amounts.
Yeah.
For transportation.
That's right.
I mean, over four thousand dollars.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thanks Troy, appreciate it. Okay, and next we have the bills speaking up. I have a motion.
Uh, I move that the receipts be noted and that the bills be paid as printed.
Okay, motion on the second that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed. Could we have roll call, please, Marie? Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Thank you. And on to new business, first possible action on employee appointments, resignations and requirement requests.
We have a point length, lengthy list. Um, we have two support staff resignations, Michelle Zimmerman and Megan Follett. Um, Michelle is looking to spend some more time with family and Megan is looking for she wanted less hours than she currently was working. Um, and our early staff or professional staff retirement, Toni Colhane teaches kindergarten at Howe, um, over retiring at the end of the school year. Sarah Matthews will be retiring on December 20th, 2019. And then finally, we have an appointment, a position that has been open for, I think, the whole school year, they finally found someone to do the noon aid, noon duty aid at Woodside.
Can I move approval of all those on the sheet?
Sure, you should be able.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the second to approve the, the three, there's a resignation, a following two support staff resignation, professional staff early retirement and a support staff early retirement and then also a support staff appointment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Brian. And lastly, we have discussion on possible action to select the 2020 Friend of Education Award. Craig, you don't wanna say anything about that?
Sure, so we, um, you know, I had our standard chit chat with the president and vice president, Marion John, and um, one of the uh names that came up last year, um, and one of the names that came up immediately upon my arrival in district a couple of years back is Amy and Ryan Shite. So, that would be the recommendation um for approval and I would cite their involvement with all things theater, their involvement with multiple things associated with Mead Elementary School, their involvement with music, it's insane. Um, Amy and Ryan both are involved in all kinds of things, both district related, community related, outreach, outstanding food and catering, not to mention, which is a nice perk, but uh, they're great people, they're huge advocates of the district, of the district and a lot of our programs and um some of our specific schools as well.
Cool, okay. And now, this is changed, we're having it now in November, so it'll be at the Christmas concert, right?
That's correct. It's a holiday concert with the uh thought process being that that will be more well-attended. Uh, and we would have an opportunity to just increase exposure to the recipients, so we made that modification for this year. And um, yeah, it'll be good times.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, great, so.
I move to approve of presenting the 2020 Friend of Education Award to Amy and Ryan Shitey, of great expectations.
Okay, motion on the second to, to approve the presenting of the 2020 Friend of Education Award to Amy and Ryan Shitey, of great expectations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And with that, we urge.